Good evening and welcome to the St. Brain Valley Schools Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you. I'm going to start this evening with a tradition that was started by our previous Board of Education President, Bob Smith. And I'm going to read the district's mission statement. This mission statement is our North Star and it does guide all of our decision-making. It reads as follows. "To educate each student in a safe learning environment so that they may develop to their highest potential and become contributing citizens." Barb, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Arrington.
Here.
Mr. Berthold.
Present.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Dr. Martyr.
Present.
Ms. Pierce.
Here.
Mrs. Ragland.
Here.
And Ms. Seagrist.
Here. Thank you, Barb. Have there been any addendums or changes to the agenda this evening?
There have not.
Thanks, Barb. And the last time I spoke with you, there was not any audience, there was no audience participation.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And we get back to visitors, which has been a fairly empty slot ever since COVID. So that brings us pretty quickly to Agenda Item 5. Dawn, which is the superintendent's report.
All right. Well, I appreciate that, Joey. Thank you. A couple of things. One, I've had a chance to get into every school and several of the schools more than once. And very, very appreciative and impressed by what I've been seeing. I've had the opportunity to stand behind some teachers while they have their students on the screen and wave to the students and make a connection there. And, uh, and talk to a lot of teachers about the kinds of work they're doing with the synchronous learning model. And the reports in terms of student attendance are very good. We're getting very high student participation and attendance. And I think the combination of being able to see your teacher and being able to hear your teacher and have that verbal interaction. I also think it's been, uh, it's been good for the students to be able to see directly into the classrooms and to see all of the instructional materials and displays and demonstrations in that environment. I think that's important. It sets the stage for the learning. But I'm very, very proud of our teachers and our staff. The buildings look really incredible in terms of not only their cleanliness, but also the renovations and the bond projects, which you'll hear a little bit more about. So that's the synchronous learning piece. The Launched Ed, which we had about, we have about twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred students enrolled in Launched Ed. And the thing that I would share with you, it's a unique situation because normally when we open a school, we start a full year in advance and we hire a principal and we hire a leadership team and we hire secretarial support. And we involve a lot of different people in that process. And that's when it's one level, elementary or middle or high school. So the concept of opening a pre-K through twelve school with numbers twice as large as our largest school in a matter of weeks is something that I don't think should go unnoticed. I, I notice in a couple of places where they've tried to do it, they have consistently backed up the start date by first a week and then another week and then another week. You know, our team took that challenge on and it does not come without struggles and difficulties, for sure. We also had about six hundred people register two days before the close of registration. And so if you can imagine in a traditional school, if you had six hundred students show up on your doorstep two days before you were getting ready to build a schedule, you would then have to hire teachers. And so they onboarded and hired, you know, over a hundred teachers in a short period of time, moved the scheduling around. One of the early challenges was the electives piece. They have resolved that to the, for the most part by allowing students to sign up for an elective or two at their home school. And so that piece is being finalized. Our elementary schools now, the schedules are primarily done, the high schools, the middle schools, all the cores. And they're continuing to make progress with nailing down the electives. Also making sure all of the students are registered as full-time students. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the community's patience and understanding that when you go to an undertaking like this. The other thing that I think is also important in recognizing the teachers and the staff is this is all on the heels of a fifteen million dollar overnight budget cut. And so it's not as if you can hire all of the people that are necessary to do the work. Because, you know, if you remember in two thousand and two, a fourteen million dollar budget cut brought the district to its knees. And so a fifteen million dollar budget cut overnight is not conducive to opening up a three thousand student high school, K, pre-K through twelve. But nonetheless, they've done that and it's up and running and we're going to continue Kale and Ann and those folks. And I am very appreciative of the patience that the community has demonstrated and the support. It's always a good news story when you talk about the community in St. Brain. They are, they are very supportive. And I also want people to know that we acknowledge that there are challenges, but we feel like we're moving forward in a, uh, in a positive way right now with both the synchronous learning and the asynchronous learning. There are going to continue to be some challenges. One of the other challenges that we faced is with technology, sometimes you have people make really poor choices. And they will log in inappropriately and sometimes they will do things that are racist in nature. They will do things that are extremely, extremely disturbing. We have put in, uh, put into place mechanisms to block that. You have to log in from a St. Brain website or email address. You also have to have a password and then the teacher has to let you in. So all of the things that we can do in working with Cisco, I know that this has been a problem across the state and across the country. It's been reported on by a number of law enforcement agencies. And what I want, uh, and I've shared this with our principals and our staff, is that we have no tolerance for that. And those kinds of behaviors will be turned over to law enforcement and they will be met with significant discipline in terms of from a school district's response. So again, I'm speaking to a very, very small fraction of our students because overwhelmingly they have been outstanding, as have our teachers and staff. But whenever you have a system like this across the country, it invites some of these extremely serious behaviors. And so we're addressing that in a very serious way. So that's kind of the totality of the synchronous learning and the Launched Ed. A recent letter just went out sharing all of pretty much what I shared with you, with our community, those folks that are signed up for Launched Ed. But it's going well and our teachers and our students and our parents have a lot to be proud of. And again, I want to thank them for their, their patience and their support. I also want you to know that Jackie and her team, Carrie and Michelle, and they put together a parent resource support center where you can go in and you can log into WebEx Help, you can log into Schoolagihelp, you can log into all of these, CSOW Help and things like that. And Jackie will get into that detail with you in just a little bit. We also have our reopening team continuing to meet today. We met with Dr. Urbina, we met with Jeff Zayac, who's the Director of Boulder County Health, and Heather Crete, who's the school liaison for this COVID virus response. And then also Jackie, Carrie, and other members of our team. And Jim, thank you for attending. And we have established in partnership with them very clear criteria that we will be looking at and monitoring the data in order to make a decision as to what we're going to do in October. And that obviously will may be made before October, but, um, and we also agreed, Steve Villarreal was there along with Fran Doherty. And we agreed that we're going to continue to have these conversations with all of the association reps and then do a webinar or a presentation on WebEx to the entire community who can log in sometime mid-September to see what those criteria look like and what the data is showing. The good news right now is that the data in Boulder County and Weld County is coming way down. And that's good in terms of rates, positivity rates and things. One of the most onerous challenges for us continues to be the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that requires quarantining and closures and all sorts of reactions to people if they test positive or if they are probable or suspected. In St. Brain, we have had now sixty-eight scenarios where we have had to ask people to quarantine. If we were to have had students in school, those numbers would be in the thousands at this point. Because if you have a high school teacher, for example, and they teach six classes and they have a suspected case and all six of those classes of twenty-five to thirty students then have to be quarantined. That one person being quarantined can result in a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty students being quarantined. And so we're having to monitor that and, and pay attention to that. And all of that data will be looked at as we make our decisions to, to come back to some form of in-person learning, which again, to reiterate, is our, is our priority. That is what we're trying to accomplish. So I guess stay tuned and we will send communication out to our community with those dates and times and how to log in to participate and to see and hear that information from our health experts. But I do want to emphasize because a lot of times we're looking at the data and it's showing one thing. But what the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment is requiring us to do in response to not only a positive COVID, but someone who demonstrates symptoms, whether it's COVID or not, until it's proven not to be. And as you can imagine, in schools, lots of people have sore throats and coughs and fevers and demonstrate these things. And when that happens, then you, it triggers these requirements. And this is what we're pushing really hard to get some of that relaxed. And at the end of the day, we'll have to see where that goes, but, but we're pushing really hard to come back to in-person learning. The other thing that I would share with you is the COVID testing for our teachers and staff. We're looking to start that in that first week in, right after the first week in September where they can get two tests at no cost to the individual. And then once we get through that first round, we'll make a determination around October and keep going as long as we need to. And that information will be very helpful for us as well. And Jackie will share a little bit about that with you as she has been immersed for a long time with Greg and others ironing out all of the details with our attorneys with the Gary Community Foundation, Family Foundation. Uh, let's see. I do want you to know that on a positive note, I've been able to deliver about twenty-five bells for twenty-five years of service. I've got two more to deliver tomorrow. But it's been great making the rounds in the schools and seeing some of our, you know, our outstanding teachers and staff members who have been with us for a long time, very proud of them. And that's been great to see and recognizing them for their great work. Also, in terms of grants, we recently were awarded a multi-hundred thousand dollar Counselor Core Grant, which gives us opportunities to hire even more counselors than the counselors we added from the general fund last year. And then we also won a hundred thousand dollar grant from Boeing, one of their larger grants, to continue to pursue the work that we're doing at the Innovation Center. And then we won a four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar NSF grant around cybersecurity. So we're moving forward now with opening up and the planning process for our cybersecurity PTEC program at Silver Creek and Longmont in that area. We'll have to nail down all of the logistics. But so some great news with all of that. We've also been having a good deal of success with our fall sports and activities, whether it's the tennis teams that you've seen or the cross-country teams or the, uh, the softball teams that have been out there. And it's been really good to see. So very proud of our students and hopefully some of that success will, will continue. And, uh, and then, uh, I guess the last thing that I would share, October counts. We've had two of them now and from the first to the second, we ended up gaining about eighty students. But our enrollment is down, which is to be expected. It's going to be down across the entire metro area. And so we're going to continue. We've got several counts that are planned. And we have identified what that would mean from a financial perspective and also from a logistical perspective in terms of do we need to move people from one building to the next to balance everything out? And so we're in the process of doing that, but we've got a pretty good handle on, on where we are. And we'll continue to monitor that all the way up through the next month and let you know where that goes. So with that, Jackie, I'm going to ask.
Sure.
Turn it over to you and you can talk a little bit about the parent support group. And then also you've got some recognitions there and then the, uh, the COVID testing and, and whatever else you think you'd like to share.
Okay. So Dawn is correct in that we have had for a while a number of resources and supports for parents, but they lived in different locations. Some of them lived on DTS's webpage. We've sent some of them out in letters, some links out in letters and just decided that it would probably be much more user-friendly for our families if we put all of these resources into one location and that location is displayed very prominently on our, our website, on the, the front page, the homepage of our website. So this is what it looks like. Most importantly, um, is an easy way for parents to request personalized tech support through a user-friendly form. So regardless of what parents are challenged with, they have a way to reach out and to get support from one of our tech people at DTS with whatever personalized challenge they might be having. So that's, that's first and foremost. Then as we, um, you know, we give some, uh, some general information for those who are still new to using the iPad. Our iPads are set up very specifically for St. Brain and for the learning that will happen in St. Brain. So parents sometimes need some direction and some support around the use of the student iPad. And then our website also gives information on internet access, both at the district locations, but also ways to affordably gain access to the, to the internet in their own homes. So we give some information to families about that as well. We provide procedures on how to set up WebEx for your child. This is our process that we're using to deliver direct instruction synchronously. So it's really important that our families know how to use WebEx, how to download it and also how to protect students in terms of their privacy and how to get into different classrooms based on the links and the new procedures that Dawn also alluded to this evening. So we offer a tutorial around WebEx. Moving down the page, we get into our learning management systems. And in St. Brain, we have two. We have Schoolagih for grades four through twelve. And we have CSOW for grades pre-K through three. And we offer videos. Our learning services team put together videos that help parents understand our learning management system and what kind of information you can find on that system, how you can access assignments, see what your children are completing, get the directions from the teacher. And it just allows parents to monitor those assignments on the front end. Because then as we move down, we talk more about Infinite Campus and that's the rearview mirror. Schoolagih and CSOW are the windshield. That's where I get to see what my student is being assigned. Infinite Campus helps parents, as you all know, monitor grades, attendance, and see any assignments that are missing. And so we offer again, directions, and we've done this for years. It's become more important recently. But we offer directions on how you set up your notifications and, and what are the things that you can monitor related to student academic progress in Infinite Campus. You have seen the English-facing side to this. All of these resources are also translated in Spanish as well. And so we've just, we've had, again, these resources for a number of months. We started working on them last spring when we had to go online so quickly. But again, we just, after, you know, hearing some parent feedback even at our last board meeting, decided we needed to get them all in one location and make it easy for them to find. So I'll stop there on this topic and see if there's any questions or anything that you'd like to, to ask. And if not, I'll move on to a couple of other agenda items.
Jackie, just real quick, can you say how to get there from our website again? Or where on our website is that found?
Uh, so it is, it's found on our front COVID page. So on the, our homepage is our, a link to our COVID page. And this is displayed on our COVID page.
Perfect. Thank you.
If you're, you know, an outside parent, um, outside of the district, um, or a parent outside of our system and you were logging into the website, can you show exactly how they would get to the COVID site?
So from our homepage, and I apologize for those, for it to be that I don't have a microphone. From our homepage.
Thank you, Jackie.
From our homepage, and you'll see this large orange bar, um, and that actually is on every school website as well. So this is across our system. You see links here in both English and Spanish. So whichever language is your preference, you would click there to access the reopening plan. And this takes you to our coronavirus website that houses all of the information that we've put together related to school reopening. And we've added prominently on the homepage on both English and Spanish, the Technology Support Center button. So when you click that, it takes you directly to that support center that has all of those resources. It's also accessible if a parent is on the elementary school page and is looking through the elementary school information. The Technology Support Center is also accessible straight from any of our leveled pages on that website.
Thank you. Joey, I also just wanted to say, um, mention thank you to everyone involved in also getting this up in Spanish. You know, I know a huge undertaking, but so important and much appreciated. So thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So I'm going to move on to some celebrations that we have this evening.
Jackie, can I just jump in real quick? Are you, are we already seeing solid utilization of that? Of the consolidated resources and the technical support? Are we tracking it yet?
You know, we just pulled it all together on Monday.
Okay.
And made sure that everything was translated. And it, it, it's live now, so we can monitor that as we go.
Okay. Yes. Okay, great. Sounds good.
We've had significant traffic on our coronavirus websites. Our community is going there. I mean, we're monitoring levels of patient traffic, so we can see that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
We can give an update at that, at some point. Yeah? Okay. So I, I want to just talk a little bit today about some things that have been going on in the area of reading, early literacy, to be exact. Over the summer, we had a mobile innovation lab tour. It was our St. Brain Reads Tour. I just wanted to give an update about that because I talked about it earlier in the summer and then said I would come back and update you. That mobile labs had ten different stops within each feeder and also at Stafford Toyota. We gave away over thirty-eight hundred books in grades K through twelve. We were highlighted in two publications. People were very excited about the mobile lab being out in the community. So The Times Call and The Longmont Leader covered, uh, had stories.
Hey, Jackie.
Yes.
Just one thing, you know, as I'm looking at this picture down in the left-hand corner, you know, I can see the staffs there.
Yes.
And, you know, what I would want to just share is from way back, you know, twenty years ago when I was the principal at Niwot High School, that this family was instrumental with our weight room construction, with our scoreboards out at the baseball field. They have been truly supporting us with thousands and thousands of dollars for years. It's an incredible family and I really want them to know how much we appreciate it. Their kids, you know, played football and other things at Niwot and they're grown now and have their own kids. But it's just a real testament to how Stafford Toyota has come back and continues to give back to this community for years. So, thanks.
Great. Thanks. They are. They were really excited to have the mobile lab at their business on that day. And they invite us back often, so we enjoy being there. It's, it's really a great central location out in the Carbon Valley area. And then we also had a parent who provided this quote about the mobile lab. "On behalf of all of the St. Brain Valley School District students who picked up books in Lyons today, thank you. What an amazing and fun program you have put together. We are so grateful that you squeezed in Lyons Elementary School as your big grand finale. The book selection and organization by reading levels, reading levels were great. And students who were managing the book tables were very professional and helpful. What a great crew." And that came from one of our Lyons parents. They probably loved having it at the end because we gave away books like crazy to that last stop. And we did have student workers work the mobile lab all summer. And they really were. They were just fabulous kids. So we appreciate all, all that went into that. Colin Rickman is our mobile lab coordinator and he has a lot of energy. He's planning some great things for the fall. We're going to try to get out to elementary schools and do science, little science in a bag experiments where we host almost a Bill Nye the Science Guy-type lesson from the mobile lab. And students can do the lesson using the materials we've distributed in baggies at home along with the teacher who's going to teach that lesson. So we're excited about that. We also are looking to do a design challenge in a bag. And again, have those materials at various schools for distribution and then allow students to do design challenges from home. So we're just trying to find ways to bring STEM to them. Okay. And then another celebration that I have is that we just calculated the summer reading challenge for Mayon. And we had, we, we calculated all of the minutes that students read. And we had three winners and two of our winners are first-time winners for the, the Mayon Challenge. Our first place winner, and they've been winners before, is Hygiene Elementary. And their students read an average of a hundred and twenty-one minutes this past summer. And three hundred and seventy-nine students were involved in their Mayon Challenge. And then our second place winner, and this is their first time, is Indian Peaks Elementary, three hundred and thirty-seven students. And they read an average of ninety-five minutes per student. And then Rocky Mountain Elementary was our third place winner. And they had three hundred and eighty-nine students involved for an average of seventy-two point nine zero minutes. And so Dr. Hadad was able to deliver their big checks. They're always appreciative of that. Most of the time, they use it to buy books so that students have more reading materials. And so he was able to deliver those this last week as well. And then the last celebration I have is actually a superintendent's excellence, excellence in education award. This was an award that Ashley Swanson, who is our coordinator for e-learning, put in. So she wrote this. And, um, I would also like to recognize Ashley, even though she submitted this award on behalf of the teachers who taught e-learning this summer, e-credit recovery. Really, all of the things those teachers did would not have been possible without the leadership from Ashley. So I'm going to include her in this award as well. So Ashley Swanson wrote, "I would like to nominate the team of educators that ran and supported the 2020 Summer School Session for an Excellence in Education Award. Working in St. Brain, you never have to look far to see innovation, excellence, hard work, and passion because it's all around us. But this team of educators exceeded all expectations in unprecedented times in education. After a sudden shift to online in the spring, these educators willingly, willingly jumped into the first-ever online summer school session, all the while knowing that the fall semester ahead of them would likely bring many changes as well." all the while knowing that the fall semester ahead of them would likely bring many changes as well. This year's online summer program proved to be much more challenging and time-consuming than previous summer school sessions. Many of our teachers were working eight hours a day instead of the normal three hours a day. Teachers were answering emails in the evenings and on weekends. They were making support calls weekly, in some cases daily, and providing face-to-face support for students who needed it. To every late registration, class size increase, parent support request, these teachers said yes. In every conversation and meeting, teachers expressed genuine concern about students completing their courses and getting on track for graduation. These teachers relentlessly pursued student engagement and academic success. These incredible educators represent what education should look like in the middle of a global pandemic, and embody the heart and the passion of what makes Saint Brain so great. I am inspired by each of them and thankful for the work of such incredible educators." And I can honestly say that we tracked, especially on our seniors, and, um, many of our seniors made it to graduation day because of the work that took place over the summer to help them finish up, um, their last credits. And really, this group of educators did whatever it took. I'd like to read their names, the list is long, it's about twenty, twenty names, but I'd like to individually recognize them. So from Skyline is Michael Aragon, Alma Ariano, Christopher Blair, Stephanie Bragalone, Thomas Caliento, Elizabeth or Beth, Beth Saron, Frank Safris, Karen Gahn, Laura Guida, Jackie Higgins, Stacy Hopel, or Hoopel, Carly Jerome, Andrew Kaplan, Shannon Crack, Amanda Kerjack, Beth Lee, Elena Mativer, Mativier, Elena Mativier, Michelle Mills, Rashani Obiri, Rebecca Reed, Kelsey Roberts, Shannon Rodriguez, Tracy Sandler, Katie Schmidt, Andrew Scott, Michelle Scott, Christina Smith, Donna Stamphel, Emily Stir, Michelle Sullivan Blenkin, Ashley Swanson, Greta Von Bernuth, Erin Warren, Whitney Weiss, Dallin Wright, and that's it. And so again, uh, we have certificates. Normally, we would have them at the board meeting, and Dr. Hadad would give the superintendent's awards to them. We are going to find a way to connect with them, um, at their schools or in a central location so that we can recognize each of them individually. But they really are a fabulous group and really very much exemplified everything that is right about the teaching profession and everything that's right about the teachers in Saint Brain. And the last thing that I will update you on is just our COVID testing. Um, Dr. Hadad is right, we are looking to begin that the day after the Labor Day, so September eighth. Um, we made a determination just this evening that we're going to use the Innovation Center. We can control a lot of the variables that we need to do with the testing at one of our own facilities. That is a very centralized facility that does not have a lot of traffic right now. It has good traffic flow. It's, uh, within, uh, and away from a, a highly populated neighborhood area. There's some houses there, um, but many are still under construction. So we will house it there for the month of September and look as to whether we'll continue to house it there in months after that. We will set the, the testing site up on September fourth if all goes well and begin that testing. We are anticipating about three hundred tests a, a day. We will operate from noon to five PM. In order to get the results back in a expedited way, we have to get them FedExed out by, by about five or six each evening. So we will wrap it up by five PM so we can get the tests out. We potentially will have results back within forty-eight hours, sometimes seventy-two hours, but that two-to-three-day window is really important because if we don't have to keep people out or keep them quarantined beyond three days, um, of course, you know, it, it's, it's good to have everyone back as much as possible to give us stability. So that's what we're looking at. We're working with Gary Community Foundation. Um, our, our, our district is covering the expense for our employees for those first two tests. The data will be really useful as we look ahead to what our potential models for bringing students back might be. And, you know, I think our, our teachers and staff members have requested easy access to testing. So this is another way that we're able to support our, our staff in Saint Brain.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, Dawn, did you have anything else to add?
You know, and Dawn, let's, Jim, if you wanna share anything about the meeting today or anybody has any questions about anything, you can either drag your headshirt and work and have your response.
Oh, thank you, yeah, well, yeah, the meeting was very, uh, I mean, it was very thorough. It covered, uh, an awful lot of information that, uh, as we go through that process next week when we meet again, uh, is starting to clarify what we're trying to get Boulder County Health to, to help us with. Because we, we get settled up with them and then the state health comes in with new, new requirements. So they said that they're pushing against that, and, uh, they didn't, Dawn didn't necessarily refer to that, but they definitely are trying to push back at some of the, uh, some of the requirements the state threw at us at the last minute to change everything we were doing. But I thought it was very good, and I think the planning to be able to get that webex with those folks as, uh, our speakers and give the information directly from them directly to, to the, to our, our staff and our, and our clients, that's, I think that's critical. So I'm looking forward to the meeting next Wednesday. Sure, it'll be even more information and more progress.
Thank you, Jim. Paula, did you have a question?
Jackie, I just had a quick question on the COVID testing for the teachers. So it's, it's, um, they don't have to be symptomatic, it's, it's, and it's voluntary. They can go, just, they can go get it if they want it.
That's correct. It, it is voluntary, although their, uh, results will be reported to the district and to Boulder County Public Health so that we can, in an aggregate way, really monitor just the health of the community and the health of our organization.
So, um, if they're asymptomatic, um, and, and someone was positive, we, it would, it would be that turnaround time, that two-to-three-day turnaround time before we would know, and then we would take responsive action as required.
Yeah, and Paula, I, I know you know this, but it's teachers and all staff, so.
Oh, all staff, okay.
Entire, all employees have access to it.
That's right. So if, if, uh, so if they were positive, then they would have to stay out of the building, right? They would have to quarantine. Um, and would we get subs in place for them, or?
Yeah, it depends. It depends on the circumstances. If they're a teacher and it requires a substitute, we would either, we have options to either pair them up with another teacher of a similar subject and/or if the teacher is able to do something at home if they're being quarantined, they could conceivably run that lesson from there as well. And then we would backfill with some support for supervision and things like that. So it all depends on how many students are impacted, uh, as to whether or not, uh, we're not, we're not counting on substitute teachers to be able to fill some of these. If we can utilize them, we will. But we do not anticipate having a large pool of substitute teachers that can come in, into that kind of an environment and, and pick up the lessons. Because of the, the nature of the technology that's involved, you know? We've taken them through some training, but our teachers who are ongoing teachers have gone through some pretty good training and have that skill set down. And so we would like to utilize them as much as possible as long as, you know, we're maintaining their health as our first priority.
And, and if a teacher is symptomatic, um, will you ask them to stay out of the building because of the symptoms, and then they can be tested either through this, this arrangement or they can just, they can privately go.
Correct.
Out into the community to get a test, but.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, symptomatic even if they've not been confirmed as a COVID case.
Yeah, they have to stay out of, stay out of the building. And then again, you'll either, they can either work from home or if they're feeling up to it, or the teachers will consolidate the broadcasts.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
During the, during the COVID testing, we have covered the cost of two tests per month, per employee. But if somebody becomes symptomatic within that two-week window, they can go back for another test.
Okay, good, right, thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you. I, I, Dawn, I just had a, I appreciated your update on the attendance. We saw in the first, the good report on the attendance, uh, in the first weekend, the preliminary work that, uh, the staff is doing with regard to enrollment. Uh, I was wondering, do, are we at a point where you have some initial numbers? Or do you want to wait until, uh, further on? I, I'd be interested in what the initial attendance numbers and what it looks like the enrollment decline might look like.
Yeah, we have, uh, some preliminary numbers, but, uh, we're still wanting to make sure that we go through a couple more counts before we put any information out, just because it's so fluid that it can shift. Like in one day, it shifted by over eighty students. And so it's just, some people are still coming back from vacation, from different locations in the summer. And then there's been that movement between Launched Ed and the synchronous learning model at the homeschools. And so I just, I, I know when I put something out, people will hold on to it even if it's gonna shift by hundreds of students. So I'd just like to wait maybe one more week.
That's fine.
So.
Yeah, I understand that, I was just wondering where you were in that process.
Yeah, no, it's a great question because we anticipate that it will be, uh, you know, there'll be a, a number of students in terms of decline. I read, uh, I read an article in the paper. One of our neighboring districts, they were reporting initial reports of like a thousand students down. And so we'll just kinda see where, where we land with that. And then some of it is the difference between FTE and student. So you sometimes with preschool or kindergarten, it might be a halftime student. So it's a body count, but also an FTE count. And sometimes those are two different things. So we're trying to look at how the impact on the budget's gonna be.
Thanks.
You bet.
John?
Thank you very much. Um, I guess due to Paula's question, I do have a question about the COVID testing. And I'm wondering, um, if it's voluntary, um, how significant numbers, I mean, what numbers are we hoping to get in terms of testing until we have a significant data point where we can actually make some smart decisions? And next, if a teacher is, um, showing signs, are, are they delegated or mandated to take a test? Or is it all still voluntary at that point?
Yeah, so we have requested between two and four thousand tests. So they will be, they will be, uh, Gary Community and COVID Colorado will be ready to administer during the month of September up to four, four thousand tests. And we could increase that midway through if we're seeing a, a really high, high interest. Um, none of the testing will be mandated. Uh, however, if a staff member is symptomatic, they will be asked to stay home because we need people to be healthy who are in, in the schools. And so, um, you know, we, we will encourage testing. It's a quick way to clear, um, your health and to demonstrate that you're, you're ready to come back to work. And so we'll certainly encourage that, but none of the testing will be mandated.
They shifted their, you know, originally, when I say they, I mean, the, uh, the health authorities originally was if you have a positive test then you have to continue to go back until you get a negative. And then they shifted it to where it would be about a ten-day period of time. And then anytime after that, if you are without fever and without the support of any kind of medicine to bring that fever down for the forty-eight hours, then you could return. Um, so if you're not taking Tylenol or something like that and your fever comes down and it stays down, um, so we would still have those screening mechanisms in place before we allowed somebody to come back into the building to make sure they were fever-free and symptom-free at that point.
I, I was just alluding to the fact that if we have a test base of six percent of the population of staff and teachers versus sixty percent, we're gonna be able to make some smarter decisions as to when we might be able to return to in-school learning. So I, I was hoping that, you know, teachers would want to find out, um, if they have asymptomatic or, or if they're infected and, and, and in terms of hope that we will be getting back to in-student learning in this, in the classrooms.
Dawn and Jackie, thank you. I would like to, on behalf of the board, recognize all of the recipients of the twenty-five-year bells. And then Jackie, the Superintendent's Excellence in Education Awards as well. Those are, are two things that, as a Board of Education, we very much look forward to celebrating in person here at a meeting. And we are able to do that this year. So thank you for, Jackie, for delivering those. Dawn, you know, for delivering those. I know that, that takes extra time out of your day, but I'm pleased that you can connect with those people. And, uh, we congratulate them and, and thank them for everything they do for Saint Brain and public education. Thank you. Dawn, as, you know, I was thinking back, as everybody was talking and, um, you were giving your update and Jackie was, was sharing hers, and I was talking with Carrie before the meeting. Um, you brought up Launched Ed and really opening a whole new school in a, a very short period of time. Multiple schools technically, if you look at the number of students. But when you think back over our first conversations, first meetings in March, um, you've done that with the entire district, really shifted, um, more than once technically to online learning and then this semester, starting with synchronous and asynchronous learning. And so I just want to just publicly thank everyone who's had a hand in that. Um, and I know, Dawn, your, your leadership has been instrumental. Without the systems in place and the funding in place financially, uh, being so strong, this really wouldn't be possible. So thank you for that foresight and leadership. And thank you to everyone who's had a hand in executing. I can't imagine the magnitude. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that a lot, Joey. And I, I would tell you that, uh, we, we definitely appreciate it. And it's just, and I know that you guys have shared this with me many times. Our teachers and our staff have just been incredible. I mean, beyond incredible, and, and our parents have too. You know, our parents have reached out in so many ways to try to offer support. And, you know, we are not by any stretch of the imagination perfect. And we have had some challenges and some struggles and some, uh, bumps in the road, some slight and some pretty significant, um, as we tried to get Launched Ed up and running, and we acknowledge that. But, uh, everybody's forging ahead and we're really, really, uh, making good progress. And we're gonna continue to do that. Our commitment is high, it's just, uh, some of these waters are uncharted. And, uh, but without our parents, without our students engaging the way they are, without our teachers, without our staff and our team, uh, none of this would be happening. So I'm very, very appreciative and wanna recognize our entire community for their support.
Oh, absolutely. And bumps are to be expected when you're doing something entirely new. But at the end of the day, you know, I started the meeting out by reading the district's mission statement. But at the end of the day, I know every single person who's involved in this, in this endeavor is committed to that mission statement. And, and bumps can be crossed, right, and repaired, and absolutely. So thank you. Just recognize everyone, um, who's, who's done that. You know, I was volunteering for the Sunrise Stampede a couple of weekends ago and, um, you know, spent a, a good chunk of, of the day there. And community schools was there working, uh, on a Saturday to get everything together and everything ready for the students to go back to school that next week. Um, and so really, you can look in every nook and cranny of the district and see that dedication. So aren't we fortunate to have the community support and the ability to do that?
You know, one other thing, when you said that, it just reminds me, you know, because we're not transporting students right now, but a number of our bus drivers are in the buildings and they've shifted their responsibility to custodial support. And so as I go into the building, I say, "You're not driving a bus right now." And they're like, "No, we're helping out here." And so a lot of our, uh, teams have shifted their responsibilities to, to be helpful. And when you mentioned community schools, you know, we had the two in every elementary school, but we just opened up a third one at Red Hawk based on some community requests. So that community school program right now is, is running pretty well. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and thanks to everybody involved with that, so.
Right, all hands on deck, right, in, in various capacities that may not be typical, so. Uh, all right, that. Uh, all right, that brings us to Agenda Item 6.1, which is a report. Uh, Tracy Bertinette is joining us via WebX. And Tracy, you're here for your annual cost savings report. We'll give you a minute to, or Greg, are you introducing Tracy?
Sure, I can introduce her.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, I saw your initials up there and I thought maybe I had it out of order. So I'll let you take it from here.
No, that's, that's great. Thanks. Tracy and her staff do a wonderful job, um, in procuring for our district. They work very hard. They work diligently. Um, and she's gonna just give you some information in terms of what that's looked like, um, over the past couple of years. So Tracy?
Hello, Tracy.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very pleased to join the board again, um, and present, uh, our cost savings, our, our activities in your procurement department. And, uh, over, for this year, or these last two years in particular, uh, I think what's brought, right off the bat, a strong point, for us and the procurement department is tying this, um, report to the strategic pri- priorities, strong district finances and student and staff well-being. That is something that, I think, really elevates this information, uh, within the district, that procurement is seen as more of a strategic partner than, um, you know, just processing. But our, our report, we demonstrate the value of, you know, the services we provide to this report. Not only cost savings data, but, uh, vendor participation in, in each solicitation. Um, the, the lead time or, uh, timeline, I guess you could call it, of when a, so, uh, bid or RFP is released and then a, a deadline date. And then the surplus property sale proceeds and that disposal process, which, uh, brings some revenue returned to the district. Just to highlight, in fiscal year nineteen, um, the procurement staff, uh, processed total purchases and established contracts in the amount of six million five hundred and sixty-five thousand, reflecting our cost savings of one million twenty-one thousand. Then in fiscal year twenty, um, they established, uh, purchases and contracts of five million five hundred and sixty-one thousand, reflecting a cost savings of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. So in fiscal year nineteen, uh, it, it projects a savings rate of sixteen percent overall purchases. And in fiscal year twenty, uh, savings rate of fourteen percent of overall purchases. Though in fiscal year nineteen, we facilitated, um, approximately eighty-nine formal invitations to bid or RFPs. Then in fiscal year, uh, twenty, we facilitated seventy-five formal solicitations. And one of our key performance indicators is, is tracking the turnaround time or the lead time. Typically, we've seen, um, average turnaround time to be twenty-five days from the time a solicitation is posted to the deadline date. Then, uh, in, but in fiscal year twenty, um, due to the pandemic, and then from working from home and more electronically, we gained some efficiencies that we learned, um, of improving that turnaround time to an average of fourteen to, um, eighteen days from the deadline date. Um, and really that was, really, um, the vendors, uh, and the, the market participating, um, that they, previously, they had been on board, uh, with processing and submitting bids and solicitations electronically, before, you know, we went to this process. So going full electronic, uh, we did successfully complete twenty-four formal solicitations, and working through a virtual, virtual processes for, um, pre-bid meetings or even a virtual, uh, walkthrough. So, you know, being, saying that, uh, as far as our electronic, going full electronic, I, I'd like to point out, it's on, I believe, the, the bottom of the spreadsheet for, uh, the cost savings from July twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. There's a bottom section, I've, um, put in italics, the, the project descriptions, of those projects. And those were, those were full electronic, um, released. And we got soli- proposals back electronically. But I wanted to highlight the asbestos project for Spark. That was the, the first kind of virtual walkthrough we did with suppliers that were pre-qualified. And, um, that was very successful. We, we partnered with, um, the engineer and the procurement staff that helped facilitate a virtual walkthrough. And, um, the, the vendors understood it. It, it went really well. It just, just the amount of time that it saved and the expense, you know, not only for the district, but also for the supplier. Returning to, you know, our overall, uh, procurement value results, the, um, the graph there, you can see over a seven-year history, the procurement team has continually achieved the cost savings, you know, that significantly that, um, our, our department total cost, um, to the district, you know, we're more than covering ourselves. And also wanted to reflect, um, you know, I, overall, really, uh, trust is the most valuable asset in public procurement. And I, I think this report over the, the past two fiscal years really reflects the high level of trust, integrity in the process that procurement team projects. And really the trust within the community that, um, you know, St. Brain is respected and our suppliers that participate know, um, the integrity of the process is kept and it's fair. And it, I'm just really proud of kind of the results over, you know, my tenure being here as Director of Procurement. And I'd be glad to address any questions or any, any other, um, you know, anything I can bring back to clarify or, or other questions you might have.
Thank you, Tracy. Do board members have any questions or comments?
Hey, Tracy. Um, thank you. I don't really have a, a question because I find the report very thorough. Um, I really appreciate the format of the whole thing, how you kind of walk us through your, your process and how the cost savings are generated and then how you compare that to your own budget. Um, and truly, you made the point, you, you all pay for yourselves and are really a critical point of the overall financial, um, responsibility that we have as the, in the district as a whole. Like centralizing your, um, skill sets in your department and, um, trusting you guys to handle it, I'm sure it takes a lot of stress off of every department, particularly Transportation and O and M and the ones that utilize you a lot. Um, I'm sure they appreciate it tremendously that you can actually spearhead all of this and manage all of this on their behalf. But I just want to thank you for the, for the report, the accuracy of it, the comprehensive nature of it and, um, all the great work that you guys, that you guys do. Because it's, it's critically important that, um, as far as the public and public tax dollars, that we are responsible for those. And, and this is a perfect example of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Dick?
Thank you, Joey. Uh, Tracy, I, as I did last year, I want to, um, uh, recognize really that the excellent work that you and your department are doing. And, uh, just a couple of comments. You have focused on the value of your work to the district, uh, primarily within the context of, uh, money saved and the regular purchasing process that you're, uh, we go through. I, it's clear that you're saving, uh, money and, and that the, uh, uh, costs of your functions are, um, more than compensated by, by the money that is being saved through your operations. But I, I would submit that, as Paula, uh, mentioned, that it's, it's every bit as important. Your role, the, the part of your role which, uh, clearly establishes that every, uh, cost savings that is possible is being, uh, achieved for our district and that the process is squeaky clean at every level, is, is, in my view, as important as, uh, the dollars that you're saving, uh, for our district operations. So I, I think that you and your department are to be tremendously commended for not only, um, ensuring that every public dollar is, uh, well-invested, but also, uh, and that the district receives this, uh, the dollar savings, but also, uh, providing, um, clear assurance that, um, the, uh, function of your, uh, department, uh, helps, uh, makes it clear that, um, all of the processes, uh, for which we have fiduciary responsibility are done and, um, with a tremendous, uh, commitment to excellence. So thank you, um, uh, to you and your staff for your continued good work, uh, over multiple years, and this last year being the most recent example.
Thank you, Dick. John?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy. Um, I do want to also commend your efforts and your whole team. What I enjoy seeing is the number of bids and the ranges. And, and I think that really shows the due diligence in terms of really procuring the best, not always the, the, well, the best route available for the district to save money and to get the best product. So thank you very much. I know you do a great job and the report is well orchestrated and put together. So thank you.
Tracy, I'll echo what already, uh, what board members have said. And thank you for being here this evening. And please pass along to your, uh, entire department, the Board of Education's appreciation.
Yes, and thank you. That, uh, appreciation from the board, you know, the superintendent, uh, Greg, you know, all the leadership is greatly appreciated. And that, that just means a lot to all of us and just the support that you have, have for us and, and backing us that way. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. Be safe. Enjoy your evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven is our consent items. Paula, I think you are going to make a brief comment about the two policies before we, before we jump into that?
Uh, yes, very quickly, I just wanted to remind the board and the, and the public that we are working through a chunk of policies that need to be updated to comply with, uh, recent changes to Title Nine at the federal level with Colorado state legislation that was passed, um, this last spring, as well as reopening schools, uh, in the COVID-nineteen environment. So the two that we have added to the consent agenda today are an extension of all of that. JII, Student Concerns, Complaints and Grievances, and LBD, Relations with District Charter Schools, have been highly vetted through our standard process. These recommended changes come, uh, very often from CASB or from our attorneys. They are parsed out to each of the departments and the policy owners, uh, who go through it with staff looking for best practice, law compliance, really, uh, through the eyes of, of, of reality and how best to align these policies with the work that we do and comply with the law. And then they, they are, uh, reviewed by our attorneys and they get back to us. So again, it's a very, it's a very detailed, very thorough review process. Everything is highly vetted by the time it comes to us. This is a continuation of that process. Um, and I believe there's still eight that are in the hopper. They will get to us when the process is, is done. And they all will pertain to students. They'll be in the category of J, so they'll, they'll be under students. And I think Jackie is, is running with those now, but we will get those when those are ready, um, just continuing the process. And I, that's it. Just a quick update on all that.
Thank you, Paula. Then, uh, before I read the consent items, did board members wish to pull any? We have two this evening. Did board members wish to pull those? All right. Then we have, uh, Consent Item 7.1, Approval First Reading Adoption, Board Policies JII, Student Concerns, Complaints and Grievances, and LBD, Relations with District Charter Schools. 7.2, Approval of Request to Grant an Exception to Board Policy GBEA, Staff Ethics Conflict of Interest, Kelleher. I would entertain a motion for approval, please?
So move.
By John in a second. By Chico. Barb, can you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Aaron?
Aye.
Mr. Berthold?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye.
And Miss Seacrest?
Aye.
Thanks, Barb. Agenda Item Eight brings us to our action items. 8.1 is a recommendation for the adoption of resolution equalizing the director district population for twenty twenty. Scott, I believe we have you with us on WebX. I'll get, give you a second to unmute and get settled if need be.
Okay, I think I'm live. Do you see me?
Uh, I can see you, absolutely. It's been a while. It's, uh, it's a pleasure to see you.
Yeah, good to see you all. Good evening. Uh, I've got two items and I'll just, uh, I'll start with the director districts. Uh, this is required by state statutes every four years to equalize the director district populations. So it's a state statute. The primary purpose is to make sure that the populations of each district are as close as possible, that the, uh, districts are contiguous and they're compact in shape. Uh, so the primary purpose is to equalize them so that we're drawing future board members from an equal area. So I guess I want to reassure you, it doesn't change any of your assignments. I think there was a question about that as far as what schools you tend to serve. Some of the boundaries may have moved in and out of certain buildings, but the attendance areas are all the same within your areas. So I want to walk you through a little bit of a PowerPoint here first, um, to just talk about some of the changes. And... Okay, so... From the beginning, uh, do you all have this, uh, chart up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so this is every four years, uh, substantially equal populations. We try to keep it within one percent. That's kind of been, uh, the standard we've held of each other. Here's what you can see how things have changed over the past four years. The blue bars are the current populations of the districts. So you can see that D, F, and G are the significant areas of growth. And A and C in particular, uh, just had kind of minimal growth. So our task really was to try to expand the area of A and C while reducing D, F, and G to get a good balance. The average population in two thousand, um, sixteen was twenty-three thousand. You can see we've grown to an average of twenty-six thousand per district. So over this time period, we've, we've added eighteen thousand residents to our district. As kind of a comparison, the previous four years, um, two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen was only a growth of six thousand. So, uh, our growth really ramped up population-wise within our district. So with the, the proposed, uh, boundary adjustments, um, expanding A and C, uh, shrinking the areas of, um, D, F, and G, we've come up with a pretty balanced, uh, scenario. So it really falls in line with, with what state statutes require. Going to the map, um, the black lines, and this might be kind of hard to see, but I have some zoom-up maps. The black lines are the old twenty sixteen... zoom-up maps, the black lines are the old 2016 boundaries, and the colored shapes are the, the new 2020 boundaries. So if we zoom in on the A and C areas where we had to expand, you can see where we had to grow to the east. There was, F still does represent skyline. It's in that area. It has Fall River Trail Ridge, but it also extends out to the Mead area as it has before. B, and you can see some of the changes that had to be made to be along, or south of Clover Basin Drive, and then a new area along Quicksilver. We didn't have to do quite as much with that, and really our overall goal was trying to make these a little bit more compact so that citizens or others couldn't accuse us of gerrymandering districts for certain purposes. So that was our goal. G changed slightly. Some of the areas took in different subdivisions to try to balance the population. And that's really the summary of the maps. Really, it was, it's kind of a team effort between Ryan and Heidi and our department of pulling building permits, certificate of occupancies, and census data, and then trying to comply with the state statute requirements. So in their packets, also included is the resolution, the legal descriptions, and then the chart that shows where the physical building is. But once again, that doesn't need to represent or change any of the ways you've been representing schools. That's just where the physical building is, but the attendance area has pretty much stayed the same among each director district. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments by board members? Paula?
Hi, Scott, thank you. So just to clarify, I'm going to say back to you what I, what I heard you say. This, I understand the point of this. It's legally, we have to balance out each of our areas that
Right.
we are elected from. But it's, this is primarily for the purposes of our elections, right? So we have an equal number of people that are... So anybody living in my district, F, the new one, for example, next year, my, my seat is up, will have the opportunity to elect somebody new. It doesn't have to align with the schools that we choose to represent, because there were some shifting around of schools.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, this doesn't do anything to you, who you represent. It's just a state statute requirement to balance for the purposes of elections and where they draw future directors.
Okay, thank you. I, thank you for clarifying.
Dick?
Thank you. Scott, this is Dick Martyr. It looks, we also received, good to see you, we also received
Yep.
a list of facilities by director district, and that list is, there's some minor changes with regard to the schools that the directors are, at least occur within the district.
Right.
And it was my impression, perhaps I'm wrong, but it was my impression that those new schools, for example, for Director District E, the one that I serve, now includes Blue Mountain, and that I would be the contact point, if you will, for that, that jurisdiction, and that was not true before.
Yeah, so there, again, these are just the, the physical buildings that are in these new boundaries. So... You're Director District E, correct?
Yes. So Timberline moved out and Blue Mountain moved in.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're, you're saying that that's just a, the board can assign whatever schools we want, and my understanding is the board is going to sort of realign the schools that we're responsible for based on this state mandate.
There's no, there's no need to realign who you serve or connect with. So, you know, if you're comfortable with who, with the schools that you're in, that's certainly your right to stay. This, this document really has nothing to do with your areas of responsibility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott. John?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify one thing, because I'm kind of assuming parents that see this might be concerned that their school's going to change, and I think I know the answer to this, but I wanted to just make sure it's publicly said, the schools will not draw students from any other population in terms of, the boundary lines for the schools remain the same.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. That's a good point. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right. Scott, thank you. I, I think I would just reiterate one more time that this is, what you've done is primarily for voting purposes, right? So that we're in alignment with statute.
Correct.
But this Board of Education, right, as a Board of Education, we are elected from a specific geographic area, a specific geographic location on the maps that you create. But as a Board of Education, we are representing all of the students across the district whenever we're making decisions, and that the people that live within those director districts can certainly start with us as a, as a starting point, like Dick mentioned, or they can reach out to anyone on the Board of Education that, that we're not, you know, we're not lording over those districts, so to speak. You know, we're not claiming them to be our own. It's simply for voting purposes, but we do represent every student and every family in St. Brain.
Yep.
Great, thank you. All right, then if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for approval for Action Item 8.1, which is the adoption of resolution equalizing director district population for 2020. So moved. By Karen in a second. By John. Barb? Barb?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second motion.
It was made by John.
Yes, sorry.
John, okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Aaron's?
Aye.
Mr. Berthold?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Martyr?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye.
And Ms. Seacrest?
Aye. Thank you, Barb. Scott, you also have Action Item 8.2, which is the recommendation for adoption of adjustment of boundaries between Blue Mountain Elementary, Altona Middle, and Longmont Estates Elementary/ Westview Middle School.
Yes, that's correct. I want to walk you through a few slides here, that the subject area that we're looking at is north of Nelson and south of the St. Brain River, and you have Hoover and Airport Road on East and West. And this area has long been designated for industrial, commercial types of uses, but over the, over the years, changes in the Longmont City Comprehensive Plan have shifted this area to a much stronger density of residential. And it, it kind of raised the question for us as we were reviewing developments and working with the city of a concern that this could overcrowd Blue Mountain with all these new units. So it's kind of been on the, the list of consideration among the city of Longmont as they changed densities of developments and, and our staff here in planning to try to see if we could balance future growth here. So it does comply with one of the guidelines that if, you know, large developments occur kind of on a boundary area or on an edge between two areas, we could consider looking at adjustments. So this kind of fit that kind of area to kind of keep an eye on. We, we got additional information that some of these developments are a little more imminent now, so we wanted to try to do this before residents start moving in, or, you know, houses are being built, and they start out in Blue Mountain, for instance, and then change to Longmont Estates. So we kind of want to be ahead of the curve here. So just to kind of highlight some of the things that have changed here, there's quite a number of developments, and the boundary line that we're, we've drawn and kind of reviewed with our transportation staff and, and the administrators at all the schools kind of evenly splits what could happen here between Longmont Estates and Westview and Blue Mountain and Altona. And it's kind of along Rogers Road there in the middle, and then catches a few developments along the edge of Hoover. So in some ways, it was kind of a more natural boundary for busing to take kind of that edge journey straight up to Longmont Estates rather than all the way over to Blue Mountain. So the breakdown of total units, 11,000, or, well, not quite that many, 1,150 in, proposed in the Longmont Estates area, and 1,044 in Blue Mountain. This is how each one of those breaks out. So there's a couple of potentially pretty large ones, Mountain Brook and Flatlands annexation. According to the city, the more imminent ones are Fairground Marketplace, Nova Annexation, and then some phases of Mountain Brook. So a few in each of the two areas. So this would be technically how we would draw the Longmont Estates and Blue Mountain boundary. We would implement this as soon as, as possible, or as soon as you vote, if you choose to vote in. I guess I want to add one other thing. We did work with transportation and made sure that there's no existing resident that is impacted by this boundary. There are only about 10 students in this area right now. There, there are kind of a variety of schools, some in Blue Mountain, Altona, they would remain. There are some that open and roll to Longmont Estates, and then there's some that just are open and rolling to a variety of places. So there's not many students in this area right now, and none of them would be changed with this boundary. So I think that's all I had on that. Are there any questions that you have?
Questions or comments? No? All right. Doesn't appear to be any questions or comments, Scott. We thank you for being forward-thinking and, yeah, made it easy, so appreciate it. All right. With that, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval of Action Item 8.2, adopting the, making the boundary adjustment that Scott just described.
So moved.
By Jim in a second.
Second.
By Karen. Barb, can you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Aaron's?
Aye.
Mr. Berthold?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Martyr?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye.
And Ms. Seacrest?
Aye. Thanks, Barb. Thank you, Scott. It was nice seeing you, and we appreciate your, we appreciate your points this evening.
All right, good to see you all, and thank you, and we'll check in later.
Sounds good. Take care.
Bye.
Greg, you are back up for Action Items 8.3 and 8.4. 8.3 is the approval of updated vendors providing services over $100,000.
Yes, so, thanks. Let me get my stuff pulled up again here.
Take your, take your time, no worries.
I am good to go. Per Board Policy DJ, DJA, there's a requirement that the board approve all vendors to whom the district pays over $100,000 for services. So this one is for purchase services. And so in June, we did that, but we now have some name changes, and we have found some vendors that, you know, we haven't historically had on the list, and so we are adding those in, and I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions or comments from the board? Doesn't appear to be any questions or comments, Greg, so we'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and call for a motion for approval of 8.3, which is a recommendation to approve updated vendors providing services over $100,000.
So moved.
By Chico in a second.
Second.
By Jim. Barb?
Mr. Aaron's?
Aye.
Mr. Berthold?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Martyr?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye.
And Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Greg, Action Item 8.4 is also yours, and this is vendors providing goods over $100,000.
Exactly, and the same board policy applies, and we've had some changes. We have a new dairy vendor. But the other thing that I would like to ask is that the board approve the increase of the Home Depot Pro line item for this year. We have it as 125,000, but our nutrition service department uses that to purchase paper supplies, and with remote learning, we have seen a, a large increase in how much paper supply we need in order to, you know, to provide those mills kind of as a grab-and-go versus in the lunchroom. So I would ask that you approve the Home Depot Pro to be 250, 250,000.
Thank you, Greg. Any comments or questions on that? Dick?
Hi, Greg. This is Dick, this is Dick Martyr. I, I was just, I had a question about the increase in the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment from $100,000 last year to 600,000. Can, can you shed some light on that?
Yeah, we're, we're looking into that, but right now, there, it appears as if they're allowing substitute teachers, if they were working a certain amount of time during the course of the year, to apply for and receive unemployment. So that's the biggest part right now. It's not any of our normal employees. It's related to substitute teachers, and we're looking into that to see, to see how that, how that works, how long that lasts, those types of things.
And so the, the anticipated amount here is one that we may not necessarily pay, but it's kind of a contingency to alert us.
We are probably highballing that, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then I would entertain a motion for approval of Action Item 8.4, the recommendation to approve the updated vendors providing goods over $100,000.
Second.
Motion by Karen and a second by John. And Barb, can you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Aaron's?
Aye.
Mr. Berthold?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Martyr?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye.
And Ms. Seacrest?
Aye. Thanks, Barb. Thank you, Greg. It was nice seeing you this evening.
Thanks, you too.
Yes, take care.
You too.
We don't have any discussion items this evening, so this brings us to the adjournment of our meeting. I did want to mention that our study session in September has been moved here to the boardroom so that we have access with WebEx. We will no longer be meeting at Mead Elementary School. And so, Don, if you don't mind, if I extend an invitation to the board individually, if they would like to visit Mead High School, you know, typically, as a Board of Education and as a district, we would, we would celebrate the grand opening of an elementary school, and with the current conditions, we're not able to do this. So if the board would like to, to tour, is it all right if they contact you?
Absolutely, yeah. And John and I had a nice tour of the building the other day, and anytime you all are interested in seeing any of the schools, I know you are pretty active and out in the community a lot, and you're in the schools a lot, so absolutely, we'd love to get together anytime and take you there.
Thank you.
Or on your own, if it's more convenient, whatever, whatever. Or on your own, if it's more convenient, whatever, whatever works best for you.
Great, yeah. Thank you very much. I suppose it's not fair of me to ask you that.
Oh, it's good.
Necessarily.
Yeah, no. Beautiful school, and so well laid out.
I've only seen the outside, and it's absolutely gorgeous.
Yeah, Betsy's done a really nice job of coordinating everything along with Brian Lamer and his team, and turned out really nice.
Great, thank you. Well, and certainly, board members could contact Betsy as well, um, but always important to initially go through you, so...
No, thanks.
All right. Did you have any closing comments, Don, after, um, at the completion of the meeting, or...
No, thank you, though.
All right, great. Then, our next Board of Education meeting is right back here in the boardroom on Wednesday, September 9th at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting, and I'll see if I can say this, I seem to mess this up every time, but I would call for a motion for adjournment, not approval, Barb, adjournment.
So moved.
By Karen in a second.
Second.
By Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.